Alright, so if we could ask everyone in the gallery to silence their devices unless they are a law enforcement officer who should not silence their devices. I will call the meeting to order this evening. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, my mother's seventy-eighth birthday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three. And I will officially call the meeting to order at seven P M. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Alright, and I'd like to announce that the meeting is also being streamed as every one of our meetings are live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as our town's Facebook, and will be available for playback in both of those orons. We will begin with our public comments, and because I see the gallery has literally only one human being in it, and it's a staff member, I presume we don't have anyone signed up for public comment?
No one has signed up.
Okay, fantastic. So we will move right on to our first item of business, the consent agenda, which includes only the minutes from our June twelfth, twenty twenty-three Mayor and Town Council Meeting. I presume that everyone has a chance to review them, and I did reach out to the clerk regarding a couple of quick edits, and so with that in mind, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with corrections mentioned.
Thank you.
Second?
Okay, so the consent agenda, consent, can I not speak this evening?
It's okay, you're trying to hurry up now.
Looking at how short this consent agenda and the entire agenda is. So the motion was made to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Grassley and seconded by Councilmember Dyer, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's everyone. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item is new business, and it is to consider, discuss, and act on a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Sykesville and the Downtown Sykesville connection. A quick item summary, we do this every year. The purpose of this item is to renew and update the memorandum of understanding between the Town and the Downtown Sykesville connection. In July twenty twenty-one, the Town entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Downtown Sykesville connection for an annual term that has been automatically renewed on an annual basis. In May twenty twenty-three, the Town approved the advancement advancement of our annual funding commitment to the D S E in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. With this change in funding, the D S E and Town agreed that the amendments to the existing M O U should be updated to reflect this shift. And again, it's my presumption that all council members have reviewed these proposed modifications to the M O U. Before asking if any member present has comments or questions for staff regarding those amendments, I just want to point out one typo and one obviously unintended omission. And both of these required edits appear in section two, paragraph two, and it's just simply a D is needed at the end of the word provide. So the Town has provided the D S E with an advance on the annual allocation. And then the next sentence, the Town's advance is intended to equal the annual contribution of fifty thousand dollars per year over the next ten years. And to, to is struck, but it needs to come after the word and, and to meet the one-third funding model. Thank you, Joe. Can you provide us any good background on this?
Uh, no, again, we try to keep the edits relatively to the point, so they just focused on the the funding itself. So all the other sections remained exactly the same. We'll still get the quarterly written reports from the D S E every time they ask for, well, they won't be asking for funding anymore, but the funding will be credited towards the debt that they they owe the Town. So they'll they'll still provide those on a quarterly basis. They're still on an annual basis, come and give a presentation and talk through the the work plan that the D S E has set out. So again, everything else is staying the same other than, like I said, the just that funding model.
Now, does any council member have questions for staff regarding this modifications to this M O U? Okay, so the staff recommends that we move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Downtown Sykesville connection as proposed with those two little edits to include, I'm sorry, to include those two edits. So do we have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, thank you. So so moved, I guess, because I just basically read it, right? So, awesome, so Councilmember Giraff makes the motion, and Council President Carter has seconded that. Is there any further need for debate or discussion of any kind before we call for a vote?
Is it, I just want, is the M O U, do we re-up it every year, or I thought it was like a three-year term?
It's, it is an annual agreement. If there's no changes as proposed, then it's automatically, so it's automatically extended year to year. But because we were making these changes, we have to get it approved again.
Gotcha.
Cool. Alright, so with no further discussion, the motion on the table is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Downtown Sykesville connection as proposed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone. So that's none opposed. So with that, the motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our announcements and reports portion of our agenda. I will start with those. The next meeting is Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to announce that we have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Police Auxiliary. And I would encourage any resident interested in these or any volunteer opportunities to send an email to town@sykesville.net for more info. Brings us to staff updates, and I realized today when preparing for this evening's meeting that last meeting in June, I didn't ask staff if there were any updates from the Town Manager's Office, and apparently didn't have any because you didn't call me out on it, but alright. So the treasurer's not here.
Treasurer's not here.
Yes, and there's no need for that because you're here and you're gonna take care of any questions that anyone has.
Well, just to make everybody aware, the reason the treasurer's not here, we don't have a treasurer report tonight is because obviously we have the end of the fiscal year, and we've started a new fiscal year. So the report for June is still under, I guess we're still working on that, just to make sure we're ready for the audit and everything like that. So in August, you will see both the fiscal year end for twenty twenty-three and then the first report for F Y twenty-four.
Excellent.
So you'll actually get a twofer in August.
Great, thank you, Joe.
No problem.
We're gonna skip right to the public safety report, and then I'll come back to you. So I will ask Chief Spalding to please come to the podium.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for warning me about the cord, Carrie, because I probably would have tripped it. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, too.
As we've done in the past, there were some questions from a council member, and I'd like to share them with you all. Thank you for the questions. Councilmember Grassley. One question was regarding one one case, the last three numbers were one thirty-two. He had asked if 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 it was an emergency petition, did not have an address listed, just wondered if it was a repeated call or was in town. This was actually a case where Sergeant Lacy was off duty and driving home and happened to hear a broadcast was was put out by the state police regarding a sad situation, actually. An off-duty officer from another jurisdiction who, according to his wife, was intent on harming himself. They gave a description of of the vehicle, and Sergeant Lacy saw the vehicle as he's driving home. And I'm like, how do you, how do you, you know, see that as you're driving home, but he's just a stickler for details? And so he saw saw the vehicle, called it out, proceeded to follow it, waited for other units to arrive. They stopped the vehicle. After a brief struggle, they were able to get the person in custody where he was taken for an emergency evaluation. So this did occur outside of town, but it was on Sergeant Lacy's way home.
Thank you for the details, Chief.
The next question was regarding whether an arrest was made. This was an incident that I'm sure you saw involving, let's just call it an assault on a female in town. Again, Sergeant Lacy, initially the report's taken by P F C Young, and Sergeant Lacy did an extensive follow-up on this case, was able to actually locate video footage. Thank goodness for ringing cellphone cam, ringing cameras, because it was pretty clear what the person had done, it was all captured on video. Sergeant Lacy was able to identify the person who is a juvenile, and the person will be charged through Department of Juvenile Services. In that sense, in a sense, he will be arrested just through Department of Juvenile Services. Our next one was regarding the catalytic converter thefts. You pointed out two cases, one forty-three and one forty-six. Unfortunately, we have had a few. And 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 both of these cases, it was the same model, a Toyota Prius, which is, I'm sure many of you know, is one of the vehicles that are commonly targeted for catalytic converter thefts. These were separate, separate cases in different parts of town. No suspects were initially developed, but Sergeant Lacy, again, is following up on this case, these cases. He's linked up with other investigators from other jurisdictions, and I believe they have a suspect in those cases, and we're hoping to be able to tie him to to our cases as well.
So are we, pardon the expression, I've heard at work, are we a target-rich environment, or is this something that's just so rampant everywhere that we are carried over in the wash?
Correct. Rampant everywhere. There's certain vehicles that are targeted, Toyota Priuses happen to be one of them. And somebody found two in our town and targeted them, so it's. And Montgomery County, as you know, it's it's an epidemic. I mean, they're they're being stolen every single day. So hopefully, we can make some arrests in in our cases, and maybe that will deter people from coming into our town and committing the same crimes.
On the right track, it sounds like.
Yes, yes, well, we have our bird dog on it, Sergeant Lacy, incredibly meticulous and thorough in his investigations, and if anybody can catch him, he can. I think the last one was regarding a, the question was, in one sixty-three, was the car stolen or not licensed? In that particular case, the car was taken by the victim's ex-fiancee, who was living with the victim in town. We were able to locate the vehicle shortly thereafter, and it was recovered and returned to the owner. It's a domestic-type situation going on, so it was stolen technically, but only for a brief period of time, returned, and no charges will be filed in that case, but we're assisting the the female party with obtaining a protection order. And appreciate your comments about community outreach. As you can see, from from a public safety report, we had quite a bit. This was a huge report this time, covering June sixth to July third. We almost broke broke our record of of over a thousand events. We had nine hundred and sixty-five total events. And community policing, we did twenty-four of those, thirty-two assists to other agencies, fifty-five foot patrols, five hundred and twenty-three patrol checks. So a very, very busy month, as well as thirty-four incident reports during that same period. So a lot of reports taken for a lot of different things. Officers are very busy and doing fine work as always.
Evident. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any additional comments or questions for the chief?
Yeah, I do. Yet another example at the end of your email about
Oh, I forgot about that.
Sergeant Kilgore, excuse me, Lieutenant Kilgore has been in this town's service for so long, and, you know, like I keep bringing it up, even my adult daughters remember when he was, he had a patrolman, but how he made an impression and, you know, developed good feelings with the kids in the neighborhood. I think that helped set him on the right path. Again, Lieutenant Kilgore is always out there protecting the town. I just had to bring that up.
Thank you. Yeah, coming out of his pocket, his own pocket, to help a young lady in distress, and he did not initially seek out reimbursement. I had to go to him and say, hey, come on, how much did you spend? So we did reimburse him. Thank you for that. But yeah, great work. Two other things I just wanted to mention real briefly, parade went well. Thank you all for for being there and and all the officers that were there as well. There was literally nothing major to report. One one lady had fallen down, required an ambulance, but other than that, went very well. National Night Out is coming up on August first. This will be our fourteenth year. We're very excited to announce that Governor Moore's staff has reached out to me and has indicated that he may try to attend. So I think that is kind of a follow-up from our meeting with him in Ocean City. Apparently, he seems to be impressed with us as a town and police department, and so once I confirm that he will be here, I'll be sure to let you know, but it'd be very nice to have him there.
Sure would.
And we're also holding our fourteenth annual Junior C S I Academy again, you know, so that'll be Saturday, September sixteenth, from nine to three. Again, it's a one-day format. It'll be held at Cooper Park, and the kids always seem to enjoy it. So we're hoping to have twenty-five to thirty middle schoolers from from our town and our area attend. And we're actually trying to arrange through Sergeant Lacy to have the helicopter land and give a presentation, so that would be, that would get the kids' interest. Canines and helicopters. If you can have one of, either one of those, it'll be a hit.
So it's not age, it's grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth?
That's what we target, yeah, for the most part. Yeah, we've made exceptions in the past, but we try to gear the program towards that middle school age.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
That's all I have. Questions? I'm sorry?
More of a comment. Noticing that inherent increase of behavioral health calls, which seems even more so, I don't know if it's given the length, but it seems like more so than what we've seen in the past. And so just kind of a renewed call to look at having Narcan available on Main Street with the A Ds. We had talked at M M L about A Ds, Stop the Bleed kits, and Narcan being readily available and just, you know, for council and awareness for our citizens. Getting that training, having that available, I think, you know, is gonna be really important. But, you know, definitely seeing it looks like an increase in the exposure that the officers are having too in the area, so, yeah.
Well, two of the cases that are listed here, and if you noticed, there was fentanyl recovered and in one case xylazine, which is an extremely dangerous drug. It's now emerging as a, as a hot drug right now.
Right.
Very dangerous, yeah, so.
So I don't know if it would, if it would be helpful to have maybe some community education, but also for the council, if it would be helpful here for people to understand kind of what's going on. I did notice that in the in the searches. And, you know, even someone seeking an overdose. But, yeah, I mean, there's a lot. It just seems like it's much more prevalent in this report, like I said, I don't know if it's because it's just a longer report, but it just seems
No, I felt it too. I mean, I didn't have the
That's why I keep asking you, do we see the beginning of the training?
Well, it's, nationally, we absolutely are. And, you know, anything that we can be doing in town, I think, in terms of business owners being aware, in terms of council members, in terms of community members being aware, and, you know, not only resources, but even what to look for, or understanding that, I mean, I'm impressed that they were able to figure out that fentanyl was in those, because you can't always tell. So in a lot of these medications, it looks like aspirin. It looks like, you know, Tylenol or ibuprofen, or you don't, you you don't know what you're taking and things are in there, and that's why the Narcan is so important, because it can be not just someone who's seeking
Right.
an illegal drug, but it can be any of us.
Be unintentional.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I, yeah, so.
On that note, I did want to mention that Corporal Schlereth was involved in this. We recently trained all our auxiliary officers to
Um, with respect to what Councilmember Giraff is suggesting, from education and training opportunity, even if it's a, you know, a couple-hour symposium of some sort that could be offered to to those of us at this table and those two that are also absent this evening, as a starting point, and then perhaps even include the
There's mental health first aid. You know, there's Narcan training from the Health Department, so I think it's just reaching out to the Health Department, deciding what we want to do, and maybe having a closed-door
Okay.
training for everybody, including, and I would include the staff, and then see if there's a way to adapt it maybe for business owners and residents. It's just very noticeable in this report.
Maybe we could record it and put it on on Facebook, if that's possible. I don't know if that's
So it's, I think that part of the training, you want to be in a safe space for everyone to take it in and have your own conversations about kind of what does this mean to me? There are a lot of opportunities, you know, to take any of those, you know, there's psychological first aid, there's mental health first aid. So I think there, you know, and I know we had tried before to reach out to the Health Department, and then we just didn't have a quorum of enough people to bring a trainer here. So if we have the council and staff, you know, and maybe some auxiliary officers or something, I think we'd have more than enough to fill a class to make it worth someone's while to
Okay. What's the number that the Health Department is looking for?
I don't know about the Health Department. I think the classes are no more than like twenty or thirty. Yeah, so you wanna, I mean, we would easily have about half of that and and be able to do a confidential setting. The Health Department specifically, I think at the time, was only offering them at the, at Carroll Community College. So I think we'd have to just have a committed day, like we're gonna do this on this Saturday from, you know, full day, like we did our retreat or whatever, and then we can reach out and and find them or another trainer.
Will they do it in one day? I took that class, and it's two half-days.
It's eight hours. There is a new one that's shorter, but you can do it in a full day if you want. Yeah, and we could, I mean, we can even look at modifying a training and kind of, you know, I mean, I'd be more than willing to work with with the officers, you know. What do we want to just do for our own self and not do the formal training too, if that's helpful?
We'll talk more about that offline. Thank you. Chief, do you have anything else?
Well, just one last thing, is as many of you know, Corporal Schlereth was recognized in in Ocean City as our M M L Police Executive Association Top Cop of the Year for twenty twenty-two. And I believe, Mayor, you had something?
I do, yeah, and I want you to call him up if you wouldn't mind, and and maybe just, yes, that would be great, because I'm gonna say a few words, and I know there's only seven or eight of us here in the room tonight, but I'm hopeful that 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 this will get get some legs and people will be aware of of what I'm about to say, because I'm really psyched about it, so. Anyway, I'll speak about my attendance at the Mayor of the Municipal League Conference later this evening, briefly, at the end of the meeting. I just want to share a few things. But I do want to say that basically, the the highlight of the entire week for myself was undoubtedly the Police Executives Breakfast, where the Sykesville delegation, those of us that went on as representatives of Town, were invited to see Corporal Schlereth, one of our very own, receive an outstanding, well-deserved recognition. And as Chief just just announced, I'm going to repeat, it was certainly my proudest moment as 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 a mayor, and I shared that with Corporal Schlereth personally, and I wanted to share that publicly. When Governor Moore announced one of one of our very own, and who's standing here with us today, Corporal Michael Schlereth as as Maryland's Top Cop twenty twenty-two, this prestigious award is a testament to Corporal Schlereth's dedication to police work. And it was especially touching when Governor Moore personally thanked Corporal Schlereth and and his family, his wife was in attendance, for their service as well, because as the governor noted, and I think as many of us sometimes overlook, it's it's a family job, right? And it's the the sacrifice and the and the concern and the worry is shared by anyone and everyone who cares for for the officers that are putting themselves in harm's way without hesitation. And so anyway, I'd like to give Corporal Schlereth a round of applause. I understand our heartfelt congratulations and gratitude, sir, for your unwavering commitment to Sykesville and to our safety. And more about Corporal Schlereth's unwavering commitment to Sykesville's safety, I want to share a little anecdote that was shared with me. I received a call right before we went off to M M L, to Ocean City, and it was from a father whose son had, weeks before the phone call, he didn't call me when this whole place, he called the right people. He called the S P D, but the father had shared with me how absolutely terrifying he was, how absolutely terrifying it was to lose his son, lose sight of him anyway, and then ultimately have no idea where he was. They had been fishing at the pond off the linear trail, and the young man got away from from dad while dad was, you know, probably putting the fishing poles away, and got away from him, and he panicked, he got to a split in the linear trail and picked the wrong direction, because the the son had gone the opposite way. Anyway, he called his wife, and his wife immediately reached out to S P D. And that quick notification included Lieutenant Kilgore, Officer Private First Class Young, Corporal Schlereth, among others, responding with the D N R police officers, were there, at least one. I could let, please correct me if I'm if I'm wrong with any of these details, but I believe there was a D N R police officer there, a at least one Maryland State Trooper was was notified and responded. A couple Carroll County Sheriff's Department deputies, and Lieutenant coordinated the search. The boy was found unharmed, and thank God for that, and 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 that was all thanks to a timely and organized response by our police department.
Just before dark, you might add.
Yes, just before dark, and and I want to express on behalf of the boy's parents, because I promised them that I would do that with this phone call, just express how incredibly grateful we all are for Lieutenant Kilgore, Officer Young, and Corporal Schlereth's readiness and obvious preparedness. We're grateful for the wonderful partnerships that the S P D shares with those other agencies I just mentioned, and we're grateful for the family's ability to return their 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 family home in one piece that evening, because it was getting dark. I felt compelled, though, to tell Dad something that I feel compelled to share with the public tonight as well, which is, I've been asked multiple occasions since I became mayor, and since we have increased the number of positions on our police force, why do we need so many police officers? And doesn't that cost a lot of money? And I I shared that that sentiment with with Dad when he called me, because I said, I don't know if you realize this, sir, but this is, it 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 just a perfect example of 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 why we need as as many officers available to us as we have approved to do so. I have a feeling that just a few short years ago, given the hour of Dad's emergent call, which was second shift, the sun was setting, that there may not have been anybody on the receiving end of that phone in the police station at that time, if this were just a couple of years ago, let alone a supervisor, and two on on-duty patrolmen, and one of them being Corporal Schlereth. And so this is why we have ten positions available, and why Chief has been able to recruit and keep highly qualified law enforcement officers as in those positions. So the story's end is why this council supports our police department and Corporal Schlereth's statewide recognition, and this is just like so cool, because you just said something I didn't know about, about the the possibility that the governor has has at least expressed some interest in in joining us at our night out, National Night Out. But as I said, Corporal Schlereth's statewide recognition of his remarkable achievements in twenty twenty-two showcase the professionalism and unparalleled dedication to our exceptional, our exceptional police force, and the, I'm just immensely proud. So, thank you so much. Appreciate you, Corporal. Thank you. Thank you. Stay safe, alright.
Did the kid even know he was lost? Did the kid even know he was lost?
How how old was he?
Yeah, 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 I'm sure. I believe the phrase is money well spent.
Money well spent, yes.
There is no value to someone's life.
There is not, there is not. Yes, we cut you loose. Thank you, sir. Take care, Corporals. You too. Thanks for popping in. I will turn back now to Town Manager Joseph Cosentini and ask if there's any more.
Will I have to call him out?
You do. I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, exactly. Just a few quick updates, mainly dealing with the construction work, obviously, that's going along Main Street and Springfield Avenue. So we did have our monthly Springfield Avenue update just this last last Thursday. Again, progress is certainly being made. Most of the sewer work is completed, and then they're changing their focus onto the the waterline replacement. Everybody has seen the temporary waterline that has been installed along Springfield Avenue. It's definitely not the prettiest thing to look at, but people, people get us through. There were several issues with that temporary waterline when they first put it in. We had several service line breaks that they, well, just having some issues with. They've found a different way to service the line, you know, so again, has that line's being fed. There's not so much pressure in it now, so they've basically separated it into sections, so it's gonna be three sections along Springfield Avenue. And as they're working on one section, the other areas, we're using the old waterline that's underground. And then when they're done, one section, they'll move on to another one and then fire up the the temporary line. So again, that seems to have helped with some of the issues that we were having, some leaks that were being created in the in the beginning there. So they still have a target date of the end of September for completion on Springfield Avenue. Again, that means the state will then come in shortly thereafter and start their stormwater work, so again, there's no real relief in sight. There's still gonna be construction on there for for quite a while, but every milestone we can take, we'll we'll take it. As for Main Street, again, most of the Uh, as for Main Street, uh, again, most of the 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 serious construction work on Main Street is completed. They are working on the, just the individual building connections now with the waterline. Uh, and they are expecting, you know, at least another probably three weeks of that before then they can do kind of the punch-out work, which is, you know, replacing the sidewalks, uh, with, uh, you know, concrete instead of the asphalt that's there now and doing some of the cleanup efforts. So, we're looking in July, middle of August-ish timeframe for, uh, for, uh, Main Street. And then, of course, the state is supposed to come in and pave, uh, once that work is done. So, again, we're hoping, you know, September-ish timeframe for for repaving Main.
So, along all of those lines, see what I did there? Uh-huh. Um, I was out and about this weekend, um, on Main Street and a couple of business owners and at least one resident, um, would like me to pass along a message, which is they're not being notified in a timely fashion of their water being shut off. And that's affected, um, at least two of the businesses that I frequent and, um, at least for the majority of the whole business day. They couldn't prepare for it. And of course, the same for, uh, for those that live on Main Street. It's happened to at least one, so.
And so I was gonna mention that the state is not advising or notifying the residents. So as that building gets shut off, they may be advising the building owner. But there are multiple apartments in that building, so none of those residents are being notified.
Is that the county or the county's contractor that's responsible for the notification?
Ultimately, it is the county that's responsible. I'm sure the county has told the contractor that they're the ones supposed to be notifying the owner. But if they knock on the door and nobody answers, well, at least they tried. But again, that's simply not good enough.
The building face is, uh, res- I mean, is a business, but when you go back or go up.
Something on each one of the 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 interior doors to each apartment needs a notification.
Or even ask a business owner, hey, do you know how many apartments are in here? Something simple as that.
Well, but like you said, it's also going to the, the ones I'm aware of have gone to the owner of the building, who have not always gotten it in a timely fashion or know to pass it on to the residents. So, you know, I've known of apartment residents too that had no warning and.
We'll sort of reach out to the county tomorrow. I'll let you know if this is happening and then.
Especially since it's gonna run for a few more weeks, so.
Yeah, I think the Main Street, I wanna say, it's not this Thursday, it's probably next Thursday is when our regular update meeting is. So at the very latest, uh, we'll certainly bring it up there as well.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
No problem. Um, really, the only other thing, uh, I just wanted to, since we're getting accolades, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the Public Works Director Derek Treves, uh, uh, for his efforts, uh, the morning of the parade. So the night before the parade, we had a, uh, quite a heavy downpour, which was obviously needed. I know we've been saying that a lot for any rain that we've gotten. Uh, but with all the work that was going on on Main Street, a lot of gravel and rock had been like washed out into the roads. And Derek's quick thinking, um, uh, on Saturday morning, he was able to get the street sweeper out and and brush that up and clean it up a little bit. Again, the road was still under construction. It's not the best it can be, but he certainly made, um, made it improved, uh, for the folks that were gonna be out and about and walking down Springfield Avenue.
Psych out to Derek.
Psych out to Derek.
Alright, thank you.
That is all, Mayor.
Big deal. Anything else, uh, for the good of the order at this point?
I got a couple things. Hey, Joe. So there was, uh, some confusion, uh, last week about, uh, garbage pickup and recycling, uh, it was, uh, and, you know, I I went to the Facebook page, it's right there, but, uh, there was not a, uh, town alert. Are we, are we trying, are we changing that, an email bulletin or what what's the?
No, we're not necessarily changing any of that. It's just the, what we've noticed with our, um, uh, what do we call it, the newsflash, is that we only have, I wanna say it's around between five and six hundred email addresses that they go out to and a lot of them are actually not in town. Uh, so when we send that out, it's not necessarily getting to the people that we wanted to get to. So we've been trying to brainstorm about better ways to communicate with the public when we do have, uh, situations like that where garbage schedule's changing or, you know, anything that might be happening. Um, so again, we're we're open to suggestions, but, uh, uh, we'll we'll try to do a better job of making sure people are getting the message out in different ways so that everybody can.
Chief, this next one reserved for.
I was just thinking that.
I think that only reaches six or seven.
The mayor put her her trash out, her recycling out, the the night before she showed up. So, I mean, and my neighbor across the street called me, he was like, did yours get picked up? And I was like, how would I know? I haven't been outside to check. And he's like, well, mine still has its recycling.
There was miscommunication or lack of communication. He was, he was pretty up with information and honestly, I didn't have, I'm signed up for the emails and so is my husband. So there's two emails in there and neither one of us got any type of notification.
Yeah. Well, and I looked on the, I looked on the town's Facebook or the town's website and Facebook page.
And they're there.
And it's there.
And also, yeah, Instagram had it too, so the social medias had it. It was those that, like the older elderly or those that aren't necessarily going on social media every day that isn't getting that.
Question, do, um, is it nixle or nixie? I forgot.
Nixle.
Nixle. Um, we don't wanna dilute your nixle with trashcan, should be, you know, cause we're, uh, basically when I see something from you, I pay a lot of attention. Whereas I should have remembered, should we not have a separate, critical and then important but not critical nixle?
Well, and again, I mean, that's kind of what the newsflash has been.
It's it's perfect.
That's kind of what it's been. It's just not that many people are signing up for it anymore. It's just, it seems to have been diluted over the years.
Can we send out like maybe a postcard to all the residents to say, hey, can we have your email address?
I mean, I can guarantee that, uh, if not on this newsletter, certainly a future newsletter, there'll be another call for people to sign up for for notifications like that.
Very good.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was quite plenty.
It was. My whole, my whole team, they were following my lead. That's the worst part of it. Nobody had their stuff, but I was like, what the heck, you guys? It's a holiday, but you know, it's tomorrow. Like, that's usually our process, right? Where the we'll double our collection. We don't push everything a day, but it's fine that we did. I just wasn't.
There was, uh, trashcan hide and seek, of course. It's pretty funny. On Ice Street anyway, I don't know about any of it.
I have the usual trashcan discussions. I I can promise this week, it's it's back to normal.
Thank goodness. I'll put my mouth when I get home tonight.
Me too. I'm I'm ready.
So, another thing I wanted to bring up, Mayor, is, uh, uh, if if it's okay. Yeah, so, uh, I I talked to you a little bit about, uh, offline, about, uh, the cannabis symposium that's coming up from MML August tenth. Um, there's been a lot of talk at the county level about trying to do something, to limit what's going on with the state recommendations, um. Talked to a few people, uh, at the MML dinner and Mallory's coming out with something. I'm not sure when, but they're gonna try to do something and I just wanted to maybe take the lead and let the council know what's going on. I personally would like to limit as much as possible. I know that Jeremiah brought it up in the planning commission meeting. I think it was like February, March or something. And I think we just have one spot in town really that is, I mean, that.
Well, in in theory, uh, there's only one spot in town. But again, it's, I think, given some of the regulations with that, you know, it's it's, I wouldn't say it's outlawed downtown, but it, because there's so many churches and schools, you know, there's, there's only so many places it can actually go.
Right.
Um, you know, and I think right now with the town kind of undertaking our our zoning rewrite and looking at that, it's, you know, if we did have anybody that made that kind of request here, you know, I think we could, we could pass that off until after the zoning rewrite is is completed.
So, just so you know, first of all, apparently I'm on a panel at the, um, at the Symposium Symposium, to talk about zoning issues. Um, so I, uh, we are working on zoning ordinances for a couple of our clients. But also, we just did a moratorium for one client because they're not gonna have a plan in place for amending their zoning ordinance, um, in time. And so that might be something you just wanna put on the table, cause it sort of puts people on notice that, no, you're not violating the ordinance by refusing to consider anything anywhere. Um, but that you want to proceed in an appropriate and well-thought-out manner. Um, and so we can, we can do one of those for you. It may not be necessary if, as you say, you have so many churches and schools and parks, whatever the other one was, right? That you're, you know, that all the little circles overlap each other. Um, but it's just something to put on your.
Okay.
Yeah, I was planning on going to it and just disseminating all the information to the council. I don't know if anybody else is interested in going. I don't even know if anybody really stands on it, but just wanted to put it out there.
I appreciate it. I and I think, yeah, like we said offline, attending the, I'm glad that you're willing and and ready to do that, because I think at least one of us needs to, um, be on in the know with the Symposium, uh, information and then you can disseminate that and share that with us. And then whatever comes out of that as far as an ordinance or the no, or the lack thereof, the the lack of meaningful is fine too. And and we have now another approach in our back pocket if necessary, so.
Good. I'll see you August tenth, I guess.
Yes.
That'll be it. That's all I got, Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
So, um, without Leo here.
Yes.
The parade.
Yes.
DSC, great job.
Yes.
Um, thought it went off incredibly smoothly, even with the potential of road problems.
Yes, incredibly smoothly on a very unsmooth terrain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so, um, and then just also a a shout out to, um, to the committee that I sit on in terms of parks and ride. Not only did they show up, um, again, for the, uh, parade and are always highly enthusiastic when they do. Um, you know, the work that they're doing on, you know, movies, um, and those running throughout the summer and the music coming up. And they're just, I, it's a group, they're a pleasure to work with and they are are really doing a lot for the town and the families, so. Um, just wanna kind of recognize that and then, you know, that the movies continue. We we just had, you know, Christmas in July and, um, yeah, continuing with the with the movies over the summer, so.
Great. Yeah, uh, Spark is, um, is something special. Uh, all of our volunteers, all of our commissioners are, um, I'm grateful for them. And, but Spark is is its own beast, because it's not a meeting a month. It's, um, it's preparation and gathering of vol- other volunteers so that these events can go off on a regular schedule, particularly in the summertime and and one-offs here and there throughout the year. So, um, yeah, they're more than, they're more than commissioners making decisions. They're, they're the volunteers that are helping to
Make sure we're.
Provide these services to the to the community, so, thank you. That's important.
You have any feedback for us, President Parker?
HDC, we had a meeting, uh, the end of November. I mean, geez, the end of.
You probably did.
I did. Um, we we had, uh, two applications, both of them passed. And we are now in the process of reviewing the preliminary version of our new HDC guidelines. So, Carrie has, um, taken the task to put everything up on a community web base where we can put our inputs and and comments and so forth, so we don't have to, we can do this on our own leisure. And, uh, the next meeting that we have is gonna be July the twenty-fifth, uh, seven o'clock here at the townhouse.
Thank you, President Parker. Anything for us, the good of the order there?
August fourth approaches. Dates and calendar are closer than they appear. Um, I.
You know, it's like the rearview mirror thing. Is it a joke? I got a joke and I appreciate it.
I went to the local library. They've agreed to put up one of our signs. I've also spoken to the senior center itself, uh, in South Carroll. And I'm, they've agreed to, when we get one of our posters, I'm gonna go over there. Um, basically, I have shout out to people that we're trying to get people to learn to navigate the web safely. And, uh, I'm hoping for a good turnout and, um, again, thanks to Magic and for helping us with it. And I think, I'm hoping we're gonna have a very successful meeting. Um, I provided a cartoon to, uh, Joe that kind of exemplifies it. It's it's, um, Moses holding up tablets, but it says, oh, we don't give out commandments anymore. Scan the QR code.
Oh, my God, that's amazing. That's fantastic. I mean, think about how intimidating even a QR code is to somebody that.
Right, I mean, you you want me to take a picture of you? Why?
And and do I have to take a picture or how do I do this?
But again, I I took.
We've all been there.
I went to one of those classes and there were, like I I've said it before, but I gotta say, there was this woman there who was looking at her phone the same way I would a piece of unexploded ordinance. We gotta get people over, yeah, it's like, it's like you're in in London and you dig, you start digging and you hear a clank and you see a swastika going, I'm terrified. Well, she was of her phone. And we've gotta get people over that, because that's the way it's gonna be forever. And frankly, as a guy who thrives and enjoys on, enjoys it, once you get past the, I don't know, and start saying, I wanna learn. How much, I could not live without the web.
Mark, I'm not afraid of my phone, but I wanna be there just because of this exuberance. I wanna be, I wanna swim in that. Alright, thank you.
Do you have a sign-up sheet?
No, but there's, uh, there is a website where you can go through Magic and you can sign up there. And if you can, if if you don't, if you, for whatever reason, you lose connectivity, I would be glad to do it for people. But, uh, what I'm trying to do is get them to try it and if they can't, call me and I will do it for you. But that's kind of the first step. If you wanna see if these people can get this far and teach them how to navigate safely. Because as I've mentioned to the chief, you know, these are, these attack vectors are getting more and more nefarious and sneaky. I got an email that I knew wasn't right, but it took me ten minutes to prove it was a fake. And I'm pretty good. And if it took me ten minutes, I can imagine the average person's in a panic.
I know somebody who would definitely benefit from this.
So does he show your last name?
Um, no, but he shares a DNA.
Ah, now I know who. Alright, well, so the mayor's good of the, for the order, whatever I'm trying to say. Um, I just wanted to talk about my participation at MML, um, and 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 mention that it was, uh, besides myself, it was Councilmember Gurov, Councilmember Dyer, three members of staff, including Joe, um, our treasurer and our clerk, um, attended the MML's annual summer conference last, in the last week of June.
Did you say chief?
Uh, Chief was there, of course Chief was there. I mean, I just, uh, Chief was there. You know, it's funny, when I think staff, I don't think Chief, but yes, Chief is part of staff and of course he was there.
He was part of the show.
The police executive breakfast, like he was running that entire thing. So yes, Chief was there. Thank you, Councilmember Gurov. Um, anyway, it was three, uh, full days of valuable lessons, uh, and meaningful connections, uh, with the likes of Governor Moore, Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller, Attorney General Anthony Brown, all three of whom I have gotten my photographs with, as well as Controller Brooke Leirman, um, multiple cabinet secretaries and of course, other mayors and council members and private sector vendors, um, and conference sponsors. And our town attorney was there as well, which I should have called out as well, so. Um, I left Ocean City this time feeling more inspired than any other MML before it. So, um, I just wanted to, um, shout out to Governor Moore and Lieutenant Miller for not only personally taking part in the three-day event, but for sending twenty-eight of their cabinet secretaries, um, to also participate and give people like myself and Councilmember Gurov, um, the opportunity to speak directly with some cabinet secretaries. And, um, Joe and myself and Councilmember Gurov had the opportunity to sit down with several agencies, including the Department of Housing and Community Development, Department of Planning, Department of Health and the State Highway Administration. So, I can tell you that I created and fostered some existing, uh, relationships and 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 partnerships. And, uh, I promise that they'll serve to enhance our quality of life here in town, so, um, I'm really psyched about. I'm really, really psyched about the governor, like, uh, them being like, oh, Sykesville, yeah, we're gonna come over there and go our national night out. So, that is literally because of that, of that recognition that that Corporal Schlereth, uh.
Well, and the new executive director, CEO.
Say what?
Teresa.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's amazing.
Did a great job with, uh.
Yeah, she's, she really is. So the MML for the public's edification, Maryland Municipal League has been around since like nineteen thirty-four, thirty-six, I think I read today. Um, and it was, it just, uh, hired a new executive director. And this was the first conference, summer conference under that new leadership. And it's evident that, uh, some wonderful changes are underway and we're all benefiting from it. And it's val- it's a valuable resource to us and it's worth our our dues that we pay every year to participate, so. Um, is.
One more, actually, you let me think of one more shout out if I can.
Sure.
Just for you, yeah. Um, so as part of Ma- as part of leadership Maryland, uh, this week, we were finally highlighting Carroll County. And, uh, as part of the Western District, which anyone can explain that to me, great. Um, but hopefully none of my colleagues are listening. Um, because we actually have an incredible surprise for our class, um, completely by the, our amazing, amazing merchants on Main Street. So, um, we have been going to other regions and districts and they're showing us the sights and sounds of Baltimore and big fancy dinners and lots of, you know, impressive gifts. Um, but instead of doing that, our town has actually, um, put together for us. The merchants have donated, um, a total of items that we've been actually able to do four big baskets. Um, so instead of putting fifty little trinkets from somewhere into their, into bags. From somewhere into their, into bags, um, we are showing everyone up by actually. Introducing everyone to downtown Sykesville. Um, and so there will be four unique baskets, um, that will be handed out and make other people the envy of their classmates.
Wonderful, and this is, I don't know if you said, this is part of Leadership Maryland?
It's, it's for leader, yeah, it's for Leadership Maryland, so, um. We've definitely heard that um, in general, Leadership Maryland has not been able to really. Get a lot of information about Carroll County, so our merchants are knocking it out of the park, will be in Cumberland. Um, and, you know, gift cards to bring people into town, downtown Sykesville connection, we've got the uh. The coloring books and the postcards and, um, so I'm just so excited actually this week to show off our town, um. But all of the baskets, we we were actually trying to collect them from across the Western region. Um, which people were not able to do and because our, we, and we were aiming for three baskets. Our Main Street is, has put together four, so, yeah, I mean, they just, they, we ask for help, I mean. And you know this, we ask for help at our merchants step up to the plate and downtown Sykesville connection does every single time and not just a. Little thing here or there, um, so, I mean, I'm pretty excited.
Go big or go home.
Absolutely, so I will be, you know, let you all know how it goes, but, and we'll, we'll definitely be getting some of that up on social media for it.
Awesome, awesome, great, so uh, that's it. Uh, being a no other open session business, we'll move on to our closed session and I will announce that this meeting is proposed. This closed session meeting is proposed, closed pursuant to the general provisions of, general provision, provisions article. I'm gonna start over. This meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland section three dash three oh B, three oh five B. Number seven this evening to continue with, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, I have never had this much problem in my life. This evening's closed session agenda has one item on it, which is to consult with legal counsel regarding our landfill contract. Um, now I will call for a five minute recess to clear the council chambers. Um, so that we may go into closed session and note that this is not expected, that it is not expected that any. Discussions in closed session this evening will call up a need for a vote, so when we're finished with closed session, we will just return to open very briefly. Just for the uh, purpose of adjourning and uh, and and calling our public meeting uh, closed, uh, ended. So there we have it, five minute recess, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Good seeing you, man. Have a good summer, thanks for all the info. Here for you.
Does anyone need to use the restroom? If not, we're gonna get started as soon as.